Apart from the two amendments, sixty-two and sixty-three, which I would support, I oppose to all other amendments. Mr. Siu Khatron. Thank you, Madam Deputy. I'm going to speak on amendment, amendment sixty-six. It's proposed by Mr. Aulok Hin, Head One-Nine-O, Subhead Zero-Zero-Zero. This is about a resolution resolved to cut thirty-four point five-five-three million dollars from Head One-Nine-O, Subhead O-O-O. That is about the expenditure on meetings by UGC, the RGC, and the Quality Assurance Institute. Oh, I have heard from Mr. Ngao, his difficult life as a part-time teacher. It reminds me of my past. I have to declare my interest that I'm a teacher in a UGC-funded institution. And his speech, Mr. Aulok Hin's speech, reminds me of the uneasiness as a, as a part-time teacher. I was a so-called roving teacher. I'm going here and there to teach. But sometimes I'm more optimistic than Mr. Aulok Hin. I joke to myself that I'm one of the, I'm a talented person of the four big, because I was teaching concurrently in the four universities. Many people think that UGC is good, universities are good, the universities are getting bigger and bigger. Yes, they are getting bigger and bigger campuses. The budget is bigger and bigger. The teaching force is bigger and bigger, and the student population is also bigger and bigger. And even the titles are becoming grander and grander. So a university means a big learning institution. Yes, they are bigger. But what about the teaching and learning? Under the leadership of UGC, what has happened to the academics, to the academia? Can they, are they giving the freedom and liberty to air their views? Can they express their academic views in a neutral and professional manner? And they are actually creating knowledge. And they are not running the university as an enterprise. All these issues are related to the UGC. Some people think that universities are places where you find tranquility and knowledge. You can sort of gain some understanding by just looking at the doors of the teaching staff. In our universities, we have a closed-door policy, and that is the doors are always closed.
When I studied university in the eighties, the doors of the teachers were always open. They welcomed students to come into their office to talk about life, learning, and had a lot of exchanges. And sometimes we would sit down and have a cup of coffee and talk to the teachers. There were different activities that were going on in the lecturers' offices. And then we spent an entire afternoon or a couple of hours in the teachers' offices. These activities are carried out there. The classrooms are an important place to learn, and the, the lecturers' offices were another good place to learn. But now it's, the doors are all closed. Well, sometimes some lecturers even knock, lock the door and then switch off the main light so that people would not know that I'm working here. All I care about is my academic papers and my administrative work. That's so very strange. In the past, we saw that the professors' offices were filled with papers, and then there was some bad smell, but then, and the professors might not be leading a very good life in a sense. And then there were biscuits in his drawers, and he would spend night and day on his work. And today, what's happening? It's like their offices are like a CEO office. There are a lot of proposals and plans, a sort of a lot of assembly lines in his office. Different research assistants are helping him with various studies. And he is managing his office like a manager, and he would follow up on the progress of the research. Then he writes articles and he publishes them, and then he takes down his achievements, and then it goes around in circles like that. Mr. Aulok Hin proposes that a sum be cut. And the universities have changed, the lecturers have changed, and part-time lecturers. And there is a great difference in the pay between part-time and full-time lecturers. And then the, the work has become fragmented. And sometimes he suddenly got a call from another lecturer asking you to teach his lessons for him. And then the next day, the instruction has changed. It's absurd, and this is life of part-time lecturers. In universities, we are getting more worried, and there is fragmentation of work. And there is this academic undercast, and they are paid meagerly. And there is a great difference between their pay and the others. Four hundred dollars per hour, three hundred, or even two hundred and fifty dollars per hour. Maybe there are forty hours in the, in a course. And then, including the exam, setting questions for the exams, I mean, they are being paid meagerly. And then there is no support at all. You don't have an office, you don't even have a desk yourself. You don't have a key to the door, you don't have a locker even. So these are the life of academic workers. There are so many complaints, there are so many grievances. Well, Mr. Shi, you have, you are repeating your points, and Mr. Aul has already said something similar previously. Well, we have to go to the root of the problem, and that is because of the governance of the UGC. UGC is adopting a research-oriented approach, and they're not paying enough attention to teaching. And they mind very much about the ranking. And a professor should, should, cares not so much about whether the article is published. He cares very much also about the budget for his, for his research. He cares about the dollar sign. Maybe you're working on different researches funded by the government, and then you become the professor which raises the most funds. And well, this is a result of the governance of UGC. There are so many problems in the institutions. In the Hong Kong Police, you has fired nine, eighteen, nine professors who have worked from eighteen, twenty, thirty years. And in twenty, there are, there was a deficit of twenty-three million dollars. And nine lecturers were dismissed because they wanted to save up in salary of one million dollars. And the City You has also stopped offering a part-time social work programs. And this happened within the university, but that is also related to the UGC. And myself, and Yip Kin Yuen, Aulok Hin, and Dr. Fernando Chiang, we have met, we are going to meet with the Secretary-General of UGC on the twenty-eighth of May to find out what's happening. We will not talk about the UGC policies in this budget debate. We talk about thirty-five, thirty-four million dollars. And that is the expenditure on meetings of the UGCRGC and QAC. What are these meetings? How are these meetings being held? How come that after the meetings, things got worse and not better? And the universities are not functioning properly. And they are, the universities are big, but really the spirit of learning is lacking. And then we must ask UGC for an answer. So for this reason, I would support this amendment moved by Mr. Aulok Hin. Thank you, Madam Deputy. Mr. Charles Mark.
Thank you, Madam Deputy. Sorry, I pressed the wrong button, I wasn't prepared. So, so some newsings has been created, sorry. I want to speak on amendment number thirty-nine, moved by Mr. Raymond Chan. He wanted to dock the whole year's salary of the Secretary for INT, and that is under Head One-Three-Five. Maybe I stepped out, but I haven't heard Mr. Raymond Chan saying anything about this. And what is his reason for this amendment? For the ITB's work. I think in recent years, people have shown more agreement towards developing INT in Hong Kong. And as part, as a member of that sector, I support that. But this is something good, the direction is right. But maybe the government is out of touch with the reality too much. And very often, their work has attracted negative comments. Now, for the Tech Talent Emissions Scheme launched yesterday, we see that the CEO in his policy address in October talked about grooming talent. And we visit, we, we, we visited different countries, including the Bay Area. We took reference from, say, Asia and Europe and US, which are all running short of manpower. So it's just, it's something good that we should try to compete for talents. But we have to understand that the, well, the C sector has been saying that it's difficult to recruit people. But the reality is that the jobs are left vacant, and some people are not in jobs. So we have to face up to the mismatching issue. The issue cannot be resolved by having more people. And then a lot of us have been discussing whether Hong Kong is attractive enough to entice people to come over. The, we would hope that the ITB should talk to us earlier about issues, that policies they're going to implement. And they should, apart from attracting talents, you should also try to support existing talents. And then for the QEF, you will get twenty thousand dollars instead of ten thousand dollars. All we know, we all know that is insufficient. And what matters more is you should create quality jobs in Hong Kong to retain local talents as well as attract overseas talents. I can think, think of an analogy. Say, if we talk to the Water Supplies Department, the water pipes are leaking, and why are you not dealing with it? And that's, they are saying that, well, we'll just get more water into Hong Kong, buy more water from Dongjiang. Now, if the IT and T sector pie is getting bigger, we need more talents. But then we're seeing local talents, I mean, draining away. They switched to other sectors, and they've been sacked. And then you said that, well, respectively, we're going to import overseas workers. You have to be alive to the feelings of the local workers. And the government is also taking the lead to cut down on salaries. Especially, as I said in the last session. Well, two-thirds of the IT workers in the government are employed through agents. Now, ITB's colleagues are not here, but this issue has to do with the FSTB as well. The government said that they're paying the same amount, is not, they're not saving up any funds. Well, they're doing it just because of the needs of government departments. So you see that there is unequal pay for equal work, and as a result, the agents net some profits. And then some workers lose a job in the middle of their work. Now, for this scheme launched yesterday, well, there, we three, we find three areas of mismatching here. Mr. Mark, well, some other members have talked about the Tech Talent Emissions Scheme launched yesterday, and I've reminded them that it's not the right occasion to talk about this scheme. Please don't repeat what others have said. I, I don't believe that I'm repeating what others have said. I think this is a very good example, a recent example, to show what I would say. Well, as you know, the deadline is six-thirty, so I would not spend too much time here. Well, this is a very good example of a good policy, but is meeting with problems. There is a mismatching. Maybe Abba Sei is not in Cyberport, he's not Science Park, so he can't benefit from the scheme. And, and workers are also complaining that you are recruiting people with very little experience overseas. Why aren't you importing people with more experience so that we can learn from them? They will be here only to compete with us for jobs. Now, I would like to add one extra point. Please note that I think we must be mindful about local workers' sentiments. We should not be blindly importing talents. Say, for example, in Singapore, they just imported talents without detailed thinking. But starting from this, middle of this year, they have tightened the rules. They are asking for more stringent criteria, and advertisement has to be placed for two weeks to show that a local worker should not be recruited before they are allowed to import workers. Now, for Singapore, they, they find that their import of overseas workers will meet with great local resistance. So let's not jump from one extreme to another stream. We see that there are problems servicing in other countries. So I would like to say that if, if the ITB is to roll out such policies, they should take a holistic view of the situation.
They should consult the trade before announcing new measures in order to avoid undue criticisms. Because in that case, they would have to spend even more time to improve the measures, which would be unnecessary. Thank you. Mr. Gary Chan.
Thank you, Madam Deputy. We have been discussing the appropriation bill since last week. And I have something to say after hearing what the Pro Democracy Camp has said. The Pro Democracy Camp has sent in more than two hundred amendments, of which the President only approved about sixty of them. I have read the sixty-odd amendments. The majority are based on biases towards specific government departments. You can even call it a retribution or revenge. For instance, some members might not like the Correctional Services Department or Hong Kong Police Force, while others do not like the mainland. So they want to deduct all the expenses related to mainland work. Some members even want to slash the budget for purchasing Dongjiang water. So to me, all these amendments are unacceptable. Some members said moving these amendments merely want to review issues and improve the government's policymaking. But you can imagine that if these amendments are passed, would the government's policymaking be facilitated or jeopardized? It's obvious it's the latter. I would not comment specifically on the sixty-odd amendments, but I want to highlight some of them. For amendment six, seven, and eight are to do with the Correctional Services Department. And Mr. Ray Chan and Ms. Aulok Hin want to highlight the CSD. Mr. Ray Chan wants to deduct the annual salary of the Director of Correctional Services, while Mr. Aulok Hin wants to upgrade and replace the prison facilities. I'm a JP myself, and I can see that, I can say that our prisons are civilized at Hong Kong. At least we don't see widespread abuse or maltreatment towards inmates. I can say that the CSD is doing a good job. Some inmates have decided to right their wrongs while serving in prisons. Earlier, City You conducted a study saying that from between twenty-twelve and sixteen, the CSD's rehab work contributed seventy-four-point-three billion dollars for Hong Kong. In other words, the rehabilitation work has been adding value for Hong Kong. If you slash all the funding, it's unfair. And it's also, it also goes against the efforts of the CSD. If CSD staff see these amendments, their morale would certainly take a hit. I wonder if these legal members know that the CSD staff are not working in satisfactory environments, and these officers are not allowed to communicate with the outside during the work hours, and the rules are very strict. Nowadays, we are using WhatsApp for communication, and their offices face some substantial challenges. And this is one key reason why many new officers have decided to quit. And the brain drain at the CSD is rather serious compared with other discipline forces. So if we do not offer the right work incentives, and if we decide to make life even harder for them, how can we improve their morale? Of course, Ms. Aulok Hin is new to the Legislative Council. He resolves to reduce the funding for the upgrade, upgrading works of Pickle Prison and the replacement of CCTV system. Many members would support the enhancement of CCTV systems in prisons in order to safeguard the safety of inmates and CSD staff. At a panel meeting when we discussed this item, there was unanimous support from all members. So there is no reason for Ms. Aulok Hin to reverse this at this stage. I remember that at that time, Mr. Ray Chan said that the CSD has been too slow in replacing the CCTV systems. So if you want to improve the welfare and, and safety of inmates, or if you want to monitor the work of CSD offices, the CCTV systems must be upgraded. So I hope Ms. Aulok Hin can think twice about his amendments. I'd like to talk about amendment number thirty-four. It is about the Hong Kong Police Force. As you know, Hong Kong is a relatively safe place. And Ms. Aulok Hin wants to reduce or want to slash the number of non-directorate posts by one thousand and fifty-seven. This is again inappropriate. Apart from dealing with crimes, the police has to deal with potential terrorism threats. And members from all parties agree that work should be enhanced. Even if we do not talk about terrorism, there are a lot of online crimes and telephone crimes. And there have been universal calls from different camps for the police to do more. So of course, they, they should enhance or increase the number of posts. And some members want to slash the funding for special-use vehicles for the force. Of course, they would not want the force to have extra resources or funds or equipment because they feel that those equipment might be used against themselves. I think the purchase and use of such equipment are two separate matters. For certain scenarios or in an emergency, if the force is not equipped with such gear, they might face criticism. And now, some members are standing in the way of the purchase of these equipment. Every police officer would be equipped with a pistol or gun, but doesn't mean that the officers would casually use their guns. Of course not, there are rules and guidelines. So if you completely slash the funding for the purchase of such special-use gear, it is inappropriate. And in amendment fifty-one, a member wants to deduct the funding for drills for the Diabay Contingency Plan. Some members are very concerned about the Diabay Contingency Plan, and they urge the government to conduct drills. So now it's very contradictory to slash the relevant funding. For amendment number sixty-one, a member wants to slash the funding on the purchase of Dongjiang water. But as we know, Hong Kong's water resources are limited. And according to a recent TV program, we have not seen rain for quite some time until the last few days. The Cloverco Reservoir has seen a drop in the water level. If we do not spend to purchase Dongjiang water, if we rely on the desolination plant, which is still under construction, how can we tackle the water shortage? Some members might not support the lump purchase system, but it doesn't mean that we should slash our funding on purchasing Dongjiang water. Without such funding, where can we go for the water? Should we seek help from those legal members? I just want to illustrate the unreasonable amendments, and I hope that the pandemic members can think twice. I asked them to do the same every year, but year after year, they have been moving these amendments. I understand that the appropriation bill is not perfect. But it does not mean that we should turn down the entire bill. So I speak against the sixty-five amendments moved by the pandemics. Mr. Yip Kin Yuen.
Chairman. I'd like to speak on some of the amendments. There is some interference from your mobile phone. Please continue. My mobile phone is on the desk, so please move it away from the microphone. Well, if you don't understand, you might ask some members from the I T sector to educate you about it. I'd like to talk about amendments related to education, including number fifty four, fifty five, fifty six, fifty seven. These involve the reduction of the annual salary of the Secretary for Education, teaching resources on basic law education, the budget for the curriculum development unit, et cetera. On the amendment to reduce the annual salary of the Secretary for Education, this reflects current views towards education. And these include the performance of the Secretary for Education, the education policy as a whole. And if there is support towards the policy, there is no reason to reduce the Secretary's salary. But on the other hand, if the performance of the Secretary is underwhelming, it is not hard to see why this amendment has been proposed. Recently, the Secretary's reputation or rating has experienced a drop. Some people even find it comparable to the performance of the former Secretary. And his honeymoon might be over, but this is not the only thing I want to talk about. We have some expectations towards the Secretary for Education. First of all, politically, this is a matter of much interest. I hope that, like the basic law and one country, two systems, Hong Kong should take charge of its own education policy. And the education policy should reflect certain values, for example, freedom of thought, freedom of speech, et cetera. Freedom and a high degree of autonomy should be realized. And the Secretary for Education should be the gatekeeper for our education. In recent days, there have been a number of controversies. And these include certain incidents which the Chief Executive deemed frivolous. And these issues would affect the reputation of the Secretary and the Education Bureau as a whole. I hope the Secretary can offer a clear stance and that Hong Kong's education system should encompass both one country and two systems. In terms of the issue of sovereignty, the Secretary made a very clear statement. And as for history textbooks, there have been certain comments or remarks on the issue of the status of Cantonese.
And whether liberal studies should be, should continue to be a compulsory subject and how the grades should be assessed. If it's something stirred up by the media, well, the Secretary for Education can just come out and say, there's nothing of that sort. And if the government has a certain position set to, for example, if it regards Cantonese as the mother tongue, say so, say clearly. If you fail to say clearly and cause people to be worried, then there's a problem. People will be worried as regards whether our education system will continue to be one that would uphold our values. So I hope the government and the Secretary for Education in particular should pay attention to. And this is not an issue just for the Secretary for Education. And I believe people will monitor the government over its performance and its response on such issues. In terms of the education policy in Hong Kong, we'd like the government to lead Hong Kong to embark on a very good direction of development. The popularity of the Secretary has taken a beating recently because of the P three, TSA. If the Secretary has a clear idea about the objective of TSA, then there will be no need to leave such a big lingering problem in the system. And the controversy will be eliminated, and teachers and students will not be bothered by the excessive drilling. And also, the problem of distorting teaching and learning can be addressed. TSA in the primary school is one of the problems, causing too much homework being given to students. But because of this small problem, the confidence of many parents is lost. Some parents are now considering sending their children to international schools or to study abroad. If we cannot do away with the excessive coaching, excessive drilling, then our problems will simply not be resolved. If even on this small issue of P three TSA, the government is unable to send a clear message to the community, i.e., the government is determined to make sure that our students will not be subject to such an ordeal at such a young age, then it's really a pity. Apart from P three TSA, there was a recent incident causing loss of confidence. When we talk about having one social worker deployed for every primary school, well, that would present a very good opportunity to increase the capacity for counselling. Recently, there was a tragedy involving a girl and his and her older brother's problems were also not identified in his school. We need the social workers to help with difficult cases of counselling in schools. So what do we mean by one social worker for once, for every school? And that is, we want to add one more social worker to the staff of every school. And if there's already a full-time counselor, the government thinks there's no need to have another full-time social worker. So if the counselling, the guidance teacher is kept by the school, then the school cannot hire an additional social worker. But some schools are just thinking about upgrading their part-time social worker to a full-time social worker. But the community is concerned about whether counselling is done properly in primary schools. If we have to do this properly, the role of the counselling teacher is very important. The social wealth work sector and the schools would like to have this one plus one approach. If they have already got a guidance master, then giving them one additional social worker will solve the problem of manpower. Unfortunately, the government adopted this pretty special position. That is to say, if the school already has a guidance master, then it will not get another social worker. Many are disappointed. This message means, to many people, means that their needs for counselling are ignored. And it also sends out a very bad message to the teachers who are, who hold certificates in counselling and other qualifications in guidance and counselling. And we are also going to consider how to strengthen, enhance a teaching class. And the government is going to change the approach from a manpower base to a ground-based subsidy system. This is worrying. Many people have doubts as to whether the government is sincere in creating a better learning environment for students in schools or that our problems will be properly addressed and solved. So all these are very disappointing. And there's a third expectation on the part of the public, which is equally important. And that is the expenditure on education. And we need to get a real solution, which should incorporate a number of approaches. First, we should rely on recurrent funding instead of short-term funding. Recurrent funding should be the main component. And second, the funding should be given to areas where funds are most needed. Sometimes the government would suggest that you should carry out some one-off short-term projects costing some, a few million dollars. Please pay attention that when you give out short-term funding to schools, teachers would face heavier workload. We hope the financial provision can be turned into capacity, work capacity. But very often, the funding given means that the workload for teachers is increased. So you are adding more and more the duties of non-recurrent nature to the fixed team of teachers. Then it's not going to be very helpful. And in this budget, one point four billion dollars of the five billion, which is not yet spent, will be topped up by another three point six billion. This is a positive move. But as someone representing the education sector, would like to know how the fundings is to be provided and how the funding is to be expanded. But there are no programs set for the moment. And the Secretary for Education should come up with specific programs and measures so that the C E or the F S can be persuaded to spend the funds to improve the education system and to address problems, and also to respond to urgent needs for funding from schools. We've been talking about improving the teacher-to-class ratio. And why can't, why don't you respond to such calls for more subsidy expeditiously? Well, the popularity rating of the Secretary has been suffering a setback, and I think it's for good reason. And I invite officials to respond. After that, I would invite the fourteen members who have moved amendments to speak again. And also, the Financial Secretary will speak again. The debate will then come to a close, and the committee will proceed to vote on the amendments serientum. Does any official want to speak? Mr. Alnohin? Or do we have to get these officials speak first, or they are not going to speak? A point of order first. There's five minutes is left. Can Mr. Wu Jiwei be given a chance to speak? At four fifteen P M, I already make an appeal to members that if they wanted to speak, they should come down. Mr. Ou, would you like to speak now? Give me a moment. Members, this is a debate on the budget. I think, Chairman, you should give more time to members. Five minutes is not going to be sufficient. I've noticed that members have commented on the amendments in their different ways. And here, I would like to respond as well to their comments. Elizabeth Cross said she didn't understand that why Head one three five had to be cut. The expenditure under Head one three five had to be cut. I want to explain why I have reservations about this expenditure. From Cyberport to the Science Park, very often when we developed real estate, when we decide, when we develop infrastructure, it's in the name of technology or innovation. But at the end of the day, those projects become property development projects. We need to have a comprehensive I N T policy. It's not just about us giving a land for I N T, and I N T would just spring spontaneously up from the project. But many innovations come not from the Science Park or Cyberport, Cyberport. They, some of them come from Lichikou, Kun Tong, and Kualai Bay, where you see clusters of innovation bases. Why is it that after developing the Cyberport and the Science Park, yes, you have clusters of enterprises there? But in the name of technology and innovation and R and D, we end up with real property development.
So we have to tread cautiously. And President, you said that I must declare interest. I have been declaring interest all the time. I don't mind declaring again where I teach. I don't have a conflict of interest, I believe. So I can move amendments. Mr. Gary Chan, well, I'd like to thank him for noting my amendment and on C S D and the C C T V cameras in Pickok Prison, and he raised his own views on those issues. But I must clarify that in my amendment, if we are given the choice to ask for an increase in expenditure, I would like to do that. But regrettably, well, Mr. Gary Chan, you are more veteran legislator. You know that we are not allowed to do so. And I agree that agree that improvement can be made to the C S D's facilities and also the C S D staff remuneration. So if this is not the case, we would not have prepared a report on prisoners' rights, setting out the situation of the prisoners and also the C S D staff's situation. We want very much to improve their remuneration. It's not the case that I want to do away with the C C T Vs in Pickok Prison. No, that's not the case. I hope that Mr. Gary Chan can understand my stance. As for the amendment relating to the 1,057 non-directorate posts of the police, there is room for discussion. Why did I say so? We note that the ratio between the police officers and the population is, has been used as a yardstick to assess whether there are enough police officers in town. Now, in Hong Kong compared to other cities, well, we are on the high side when it comes to the racial. Well, I think it's an imbalanced racial. Well, we rank first in Asian, just after Russia, Turkey, Italy, Portugal. The four cities where there is a high crime rate. For every 220 people, we have one police officer. And now, in recent years, we have increased the number of police officers. For every 208 people in Hong Kong, we have one police officer. It is the government department which has the highest number of civil servants. And the crime rate has been decreasing in recent years. However, the police number of of police officers increased seven percent in the past four years. So is there a need to increase this 1,557 posts in the F C paper? It is said that they are to enhance the capacity to deal with emergency situations and major events. And it is to enhance our counter-terrorist efforts. And for the infrastructures like Hong Kong Chuhai Macau Bridge, Shatin Central Link, Liantang B C P, to provide support and also to support the operation of the Anti-Fraud Coordination Centre's operation. Now, from the occupation movement to now, it's four years have left. Every year, the government is using the same reason to increase the equipment and manpower. But whenever we asked the S B Security Bureau whether there is this actual need, very often, they would say that for security reasons, the information should be kept confidential. And they even refuse to cite reasons for our reference. Mr. Gary Chan, you are the chairman of the Security Panel. You understand the situation very well. The police have been abusing their power and have been prosecuting indiscriminately. And the civil society has been suppressed. And there have been little, a few incidents, conflicts between the police. And in 2017, seventy-eight people were arrested in public order events and thirteen people have been prosecuted. So with such triggers, it's not, we remain to be convinced as to why you increase manpower to deal with major public events. You are trying to expand the police power, manpower. But then, are the training facilities enough to cope with increasing manpower? No wonder the quality, the caliber of police has been on the decline. And the physical test has been done away with too. So police officers may not meet with the physical requirements. And if you are going to increase 1,057 police officers, how can we make sure it's a value-for-money exercise? And we don't see the Security Bureau giving, coming clean on that. When we had meetings at the Security Panel recently, we've been talking about the block case formed by civilian vehicles. And they refused to respond to members and the public's queries. And their answer is most unsatisfactory. So, Madam Chair, Chairman, I would like to use a remaining time to talk about Head 163, Subhead 000, and that is about the R E O. I'll have to say something that I have missed. When I talk about the F S D C, I, well, Mr. Chan Ho Lee should be the Under-Secretary. I made a mistake. My apology. So I hope that he would not mind about that. I must say that in relation to the F S D C issue, many members said that we will oppose all amendments moved by the Pen Democrats. They would only support the two amendments moved by the Financial Secretary. Chairman, you have to understand this. Legislators here, you should understand this. There are so many subheads involved and so many amendments. Aren't they worthy of our support? And how come that the F S D C has come up with a study report on relaxing the REIT developments? And as a result, S F C has made relaxation in the rules and the problem of link has resulted. Those who said that you are concerned about link problem, then you should support my amendment to cut the expenditure on F S D C. Now, coming back to the R E O. And that is to expenditure on verifying voter registration in 2018, 19. And that the amount is 61 million dollars. I'm raising this because there have been problems recently with R E O. Under the Beijing's instructions, the justice of elections has been called into question. In the past year, we have the C E and the electoral elections, and there have been political turmoils. And the R E has been playing a significant role in all these disputes. Now, we are talking about the verifying voter registration here. But I would also like to move amendment to assess the work of the R E O. Let's look back at this incident after loss of computers on voter information. In the March last year, the C E election, while 3.7 million voters' information have been lost. So that includes you and me. So there was a public outcry. There was this 1,200 voters in the C E election. How come that all the voters' information is put in the computer? When there were security measures in place, how come the people can go into the locked room? And so the important information is put in the room, is not kept or locked in a cabinet? How come that the R E O is using so much manpower and resources on this? But no security guard was deployed in the vicinity. The government has not given us a good answer on these queries. And the public worry is not allayed. And when we asked how the government would deal with the risk of information leakage, the government said that the information has been encrypted. As we all know, well, it's just a matter of time for people to hack into the system once the computers have been snatched away. Second, I would also like to talk about vote rigging during the electoral election in the Hong Kong Island constituency. That was a vote rigged in First Street and Second Street in Saiyin Pool. The residents there have received the notices which do not carry their name. And Mr. Law said that her mom lived in Second Street for thirty years and she has never received this falsified voter notice before. And he was worried that the address has been stolen. And there have been other cases where the, whereby the voter would like to vote. And then all of a sudden, their right have been taken away. So is there any room for us for improvement when we randomly check the voters? And for the R E O, there was the disqualification cases or incidents. So candidates were disqualified. So there are so many areas where the R E O can improve on itself. So it's difficult for me to go through all the amendments that I moved under the limited period I have. But in any case, I have expressed my views on various areas and why I have to move these amendments. Let me reiterate. We move amendments. Because we want to do our best under the constraint now at the electoral. We don't, there is no way we can ask for an increase in expenditure. We want to raise views on how government departments can do better. The only way I can do it is to ask for a reduction of the expenditure in the subhead. Chairman, in a minute, other members will speak on the amendments. I hope that they will be given sufficient time to express their views. Thank you. Mr. Eddie G, do you want to wish to speak again? I originally meant to say Andrew Lung, you, to say thank you. But some members have already pressed a button. You said roughly 6:30. How come that you didn't allow them to speak? On what basis did you make that judgment? Why the rush? Members have the right to speak. On what basis are you stopping them to speak? There is a group of amendments, and some of my amendments have been ruled out by you. On what basis did you do that? Please, let's reason things out. While these public officers remain silent, we've been spending so many hours in speaking about or debating on the amendments. Well, are you, how come that you chose not to speak? There is, there are these two amendments moved by the F S. Well, Ms. Claudia Mo, if you continue to shout your seat, I will consider that you are engaged in misbehavior. You know that by the rules of procedure, members on their seat should not speak. Well, I warn you again for the second time. If you speak on your seat, I will see, I would deem your behavior as extremely unruly. I will criticize you, Andrew Lung. When Starry Lee was the Madam Deputy, I said that I supported Mr. Det Hui's amendment to cut the 320,000 dollars in developing the teaching and learning resources for basic law education. Andrew Lung, you're a good example on what we're ending up with in the teaching of basic law. There is only, there is no fairness here. And then the rule of procedures, the quorum is twenty. It goes against the basic law. And the colocation arrangement goes against Article 18 of the basic law. So are you going to allow it to be discussed here?
And people can see your head on T V every single day. And and also the same goes for this, Regina. If there's no need to spend 320,000 dollars to educate students on the basic law, because you are making all the rules. So I have a question for the four officials here. The whole Hong Kong is criticizing you. So where is Paul Chan now? Everyone is criticizing and pointing fingers at Paul Chan. And you only offer texts and raise rebates. And then he came up with this, these remedial measures. We have been here for two days and you managed to not say a word. If you do not correct your treatment towards certain people and not just take care of people who need to pay taxes and people who have properties, you should stop being too full of yourself. If you do not change your attitude, the so-called remedial measures are just hypocritical and the whole world can see it. So you refuse to respond to these points. So what's the point of having a debate? Leshco is full of people like you. Andrew Lung, you are not even stopping. It's not about even stopping the filibuster. Your presence stifled the debate at Leshco. And the government official are taking a leaf out of your page and they decided not to say a word. There's no respect towards this council. There is a bunch of cheerleaders, the pro-Bayesian camp here. So there's nothing we can do. On many different issues, if you allow the government to get away with things, they would follow suit every time. For the Hong Kong Chuhai Macau Bridge, all my amendments were rejected, say for one. And there was a, there is an amendment to reduce the expansion on the Hong Kong Chuhai Macau Bridge. Mr. Gary Chan is not here. I would support him. And everyone in Hong Kong knows that this is a white elephant project with no end. For the X L, it is about to be commissioned and colocation would be forced through. And Jeffrey Ma suddenly came up from nowhere and said that you cannot buy the tickets to many mainland stations in Hong Kong. You have to go to the mainland and or you have to go through mainland agents. So this is just ridiculous. This is a complete fraud. And the Hong Kong Chuhai Macau Bridge is another fraud. For the Hong Kong Line and the maintenance of the artificial islands, it costs 270 million dollars. If you multiply it by fifty, even without accounting for inflation, it would cost 1.35 billion dollars. And we are not just talking about the Hong Kong section. We still have the main bridge. Hong Kong has taken out substantial loans and we do not even know the interest rates. I asked a supplementary question at a special meeting of the Finance Committee. The annual maintenance fee for the bridge is 210 million renminbi. And adding to another 270 million dollars, Ms. Claudia Mo. And um adding to another two hundred and seventy million dollars, Ms. Claudia Mo.
Ms. Eddie Chu.
Members. You um might have missed um what happened um just before the call. We have been um discussing the amendments for more than ten hours, including the Financial Secretary's amendments. Many members expressed views on the um remedial payout of four thousand dollars, but the government chose not to say a word on their own amendments. Ms. Eddie Chu and Andrew Lung refused to allow us to speak. Ms. Eddie Chu, if you paid attention to the script, the Financial Secretary would um speak to um address his amendments. Thank you very much. I hope members would respect Leshco and not lead to further disappointments from the public. There should be um a debate here and we should not all be yes men or rubber stamps. As I said, I am very disappointed towards the government and not just because of the remedial measures. So for people who are not paying taxes or rates, they have been ignored. For projects like the Hong Kong Chuhai Macau Bridge, um it is just like a black hole. For the maintenance costs, um I had to um put the um accounts, all the bits and pieces together. Mister Ray Chan um found that for the Hong Kong section, the annual maintenance is some two hundred and seventy million dollars for the main bridge. The maintenance is two hundred and ten million yuan per year. And in December twenty seventeen, at the um Kwangdong Province, um there was a hearing at the Law Reform Commission. And with regards to the maintenance costs of the bridge, apart from the um two hundred and ten million yuan, there is another um main maintenance charge at um sixty million plus dollars. So if you add all these three fees together, Hong Kong, the Hong Kong government has to contribute to the maintenance of um six hundred and fourteen million Hong Kong dollars per year. And you, if you multiply by fifty, it comes to more than thirty billion dollars. So for the next fifty years, we have to pay more than thirty billion dollars for maintenance and we are not even talking about cost recovery. So what can we do but to um criticize you? We want to say that Hong Kong people are very disappointed towards the Hong Kong government. So um for all cross-boundary projects, um the Hong Kong government has to contribute. And very often, we have to contribute or not, but we have no rights and powers, including the right to know or the right to decide.
Ten workers died just uh for the Hong Kong section of the bridge. And recently, uh we only managed to ask, get some questions for the main bridge. And we only know recently that nine workers died in the construction of Main Bridge. I asked this question about fatalities, what about injuries? For the Main Bridge, according to THB, we only received from the authority that there are nine fatalities. No reports on other industrial accidents have been received. And a friend of mine got some, found some information from mainland court judgments. There are some industrial accident cases uh being tried at the at their courts. But the bridge authorities just said, no, nothing, no, nothing on inju injuries. And what about those uh tetraformed concrete blocks? It is like a black hole. So that's why I oppose everything that has anything that's got anything to do with the Hong Kong Chuhai Macau Bridge. Because I want to uh do this for our people. It's the total maintenance cost is more than six hundred million dollars. And according to recent news reports, the number placed for vehicles on going, trying the bridge will increase from to increase to eleven thousand two hundred. And for business vehicles, the number has gone up to three thousand. Why? Well, because you are going to spend more on repair maintenance and you have to make ends meet. And you want to have more vehicles using the bridge, the more the better. First of all, our people do not like this bridge. We don't know how long it would take to recover cost. And we are concerned that because of this hardware, this infrastructure, you allow the mainland vehicles to come to Hong Kong indiscriminately. But you still want to do, do it. We have the hardware, we might as well do more with it. That's not the right way to do it. Look at the basic law. It's supposedly something for safeguarding our rights. Well, if you want to educate our children on how it would protect us, then I would uh be in favor of spending money to educate our people, our children. But no, you're not doing this. The basic law is used to disqualify people. And now we are given this one, this white document where the P L C constitution is at the front and the basic law is at the back. And we have to, we are asked to comply with the constitution is on top of the basic law. And you, 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 you have to declare your positions. You have to have your attitudes approved by this or that authority. Now, you have these uh cheerleading supporters. And in the past, we obeyed certain rules and now you only talk about power. Well, why is it that the people have no trust in the so-called big debate on land supply? Because you have four trillion dollars. Have you done anything to make the life of the elderly better? And not, you're just not talking about universal retirement protection. We are talking about lack of uh residential places in the homes. So why, why should I be bothered to find land so that developers can gain a bigger profit? So people's uh is not, people in Hong Kong are not going to get a good deal. Uh so people know that what's happening, they will support these amendments. Chairman? I have fifteen minutes and I want to dedicate my fifteen minutes to the animal rights. And that is about half twenty-two. And I want to take away the expenditure given to the A F C D for animal duties. Okay, you solved the problems like killing the dogs and cats that you that you've taken into custody. But this is so-called humane treatment. It's not humane. Fourteen hundred dogs and three hundred dogs were put down. It's that there's no other way. But is it really the case? Yesterday, we talked about the T R T uh T N R program, trap, neuter and release. Uh two pilot locations were covered in this three-year trial scheme. So instead of uh killing these animals, well, we offer them the better protection so that these dogs and cats can live the food of the, the full life, their natural life without being killed by A F C D. But the findings are really laughable. It's that the uh results are not very good because they have not been able to reduce the number of stray dogs by ten percent. I I don't call them stray dogs. They are community dogs. They don't want to be stray dogs. They don't want to be dirty stray dogs. They are community dogs. Why is it that you cannot reduce the number by ten percent? Because you released them unless they are, they all died. You, what you can do is to contain the number and also the, you, you cover tight tongue. There are new dogs going to their locations. There are dogs abandoned by other owners. Therefore, you cannot control the number. And the conclusion they reach is that this project is not working well. I think the A F C is, A F C D is not working well. We should tackle the problem at source. We should tackle the problem of abandonment of dogs and cats. Uh we should do a more, we should treat them humanely. Because when dogs and cats are sent to your the reception centers, animal centers, they will be killed if they are not claimed within four days. I've asked people how they do it. Uh it's an injection, muscle first and then the heart next. And then a few seconds pass and the animal is uh is die, is dead. So every day you have to destroy so many lives. I think even the A F C D officers doing the injections will be heartbroken. What's wrong with the problem, the issue? It's the, it's the policy that's wrong. We are very backward. Uh the, the more, the law we model after is the nineteen eleven U K Act. And the penalties were increased in twenty eleven, so three years imprisonment, two hundred thousand dollars in fine. But this, this, the spirit of the law remains the same. I know Professor Sophie Chan has paid attention to this issue. Uh yesterday, the, I, I saw a message on the secretaries of Facebook. Well, this city should respect life. We should amend outdated laws. Uh euthanizing animals is a big issue and his, it would involve other issues. We need a comprehensive law on this. And Macau has it, Taiwan has it. Uh Gandhi says it well, the how humane a society is, is determined by the way it treats its animals. And it's, we rely on cap four two one. Uh when cats and dogs injure or hurt people, they would have to put on quarantine to prevent the spread of rabies. The case involving marble, the cat is a case in point. And what are the penalties? Meted out by the court. It's just very insufficient. And now twenty-two police district instead of thirteen will have teams dedicated to the animal cases. But what about resources? Secretary. Last time, when there was a dog poisoning incident at Warming Estate, some of the dogs were poisoned and, and killed. The owners reported the cases to the police, they were very sad. But these bodies, the animals will not be returned to their owners. Although the owners would like to take them back for a proper burial. And now A F C D is willing to return the bodies. But this has been done very ineffectively. There are no guidelines, frontline officers don't know how to do. Because you have to keep the bodies before returning them. And some NGOs do not have enough refrigerators. And then they, they told me that they would have to keep some bodies in the corridor. What about government A F C D facilities? And sometimes they cannot take care of so many bodies even before the stage of poison testing. So the, I think the easiest solution is to cancel euthanization for animals. And now you just, you just ask for a million for this killing service. And you just give less to NGOs to take care of animal welfare. If we don't start to do this, if we start to consider why we should do this, then we, we never solve the problem. The policies are interlinked. There are more than ten laws relating to animal welfare. Well, they tackle different areas, but they are all outdated. Why do we want to cut a million dollars of A F C D's expenditure? Because you, they, according to the department, T N R doesn't work. And according to some NGOs, this is bound not to work if, if that's the approach. And you don't want to extend this to eighteen districts. But NGOs are NGOs. And the government controls public expenditure. And you can just mandate that in all the eighteen districts, we practically introduce the T N V R, the program. And that will be done. A year ago, if we talked about animal welfare, some people would just ridicule us. But this year is different. Uh the road traffic ordinance used to cover the mules, donkey, pigs, cattle. And if you hit one of those seven animals, you need to stop and report the, the accident. And now cats and dogs are to be covered. But we haven't got sufficient discussion. We should tackle the problem at source.
So what we are advocating is that we should have um the curriculum covering um protection for animals. We should start education on children at their early stage. Now, it's better to teach that than teaching people that our mother tongue is not Cantonese. If we can educate young children, we start from there and uh convey the messages of animal protection that will work. And we should also stop the A F C D using such an inhumane approach to handle animals. Would that be a preferred option? So I would suggest that we cut head twenty-two by one million dollars. I know that this is a non-starter, but then I urge all legislators to consider supporting this amendment, slashing that sum. And see how the A F C D can proceed with um new methods to handle the animals. Or else every year we'll be seeing the A F C D killing animals. I believe that frontline officers there um would not like to do that. They have feelings for animals, they don't want to do it. But then they've got the funding every year from the legislature, then they will go, go on killing them. Now, reforms can be launched. I mentioned about four days. If the animals are not adopted within four days, they will be put down. And then I talk about T N V R. You should commit more resources to expand the program and also the question of abandonment. Um you place one or two advertisements. Is it effective in tackling the problem? So consider this seriously. This is a new age for the society and we must have sympathy for animals. Uh animals' lives are precious. You may not love them, but you should not hurt them. They feel pain, just like human beings. For those who uh take joy in killing birds and, in killing dogs and cats, they will not go to hell after they die. This is not a routine amendment. I am eager to see that the proper animal protection policy is put in place. It, it's, it may sound wide in Scotland, other cities are performing well. Taiwan is a Chinese society. Macau is next to us and they have animal protection laws. They, some, they are subjected to certain criticisms, but let's learn the, the good things from them. Let's legislate on this. Now, the laws are fragmented when it comes to animal protection. Now, the responsibility of the pet owner falls within cap four two one, the rabies ordinance. And that is because that if you abandon the animals and maybe infectious diseases may be spread. And also the prevention of cruelty animals that was drawn up um from the nineteen eleven um law in the England. And the road traffic ordinance just covers cattle and horse. And that was because when it was first drawn up, there were farms. So when the legislative intent of all these laws are not to protect animals. And every year in the budget, we see that this amount, one million dollars to do euthanasia. I know that this amendment will not be passed. But I, I'm still raising this amendment because I don't want it to make it easy for the A F C D to get the amount. So for this C F A, C S A, I earnestly appeal to legislators to consider supporting it. Some pro-establishment members were saying that we are making, talking nonsense here. But do you support euthanasia? If you don't support it, then just slash the expenditure. And then A F C D will be forced to adopt a more humane approach, a humane approach in handling the city's animals. Chairman, this is just the beginning. In the council, uh we are get, uh getting more serious discussion on animal policies. Uh while some legislators in the past used to, to sneer at discussions on dogs and cats. I just quoted from Gandhi, the civilization of a city depends on how we treat our animals. If, in Hong Kong, we love animals and and we despise those who take joy in killing animals. And we must legislate on this. Now, this is an amount of one million dollars. It is, is it well spent? Should it be spent on killing dogs and cats? One thousand four hundred dogs and three hundred cats. So I submit, Mr. Gary Fan, do you wish to speak again? Mr. Al Nakken calls for quorum. Mr. Gary Fan, do you wish to speak again? I'm here, so I would definitely would like to speak again. Chairman. The budget will be the um one in the past five years which will get passed soonest. And we spent less than twenty hours in debating the dozens of amendments. But this has been the, this is the most controversial and most criticized budget. The government has recorded a surplus of one hundred and forty-eight point nine billion dollars. And that means a rise of ten point nine billion dollars compared to the one hundred and thirty-eight billion dollars. And, and it's, that's a rise of one hundred and fifty-three billion dollars. So well, the esti- the estimate, the miss, um the, the wrong estimate is by far the worst in, since ninety-nine, seventy, nineteen ninety-seven. And then you have been, are tightening the rules for allowing for C S A. You are allowing, you go by the one head, one C S A approach only. And I have moved an amendment for the printing costs for the Hong Kong Chui Macau Bridge. And also for calling for the, cutting the expenditure for the Ma Liu Shao Reclamation Project. These are not repeating the sixty-five amendments that we are having today. But the president or chairman, you have ruled those out. How can that be? I have moved ten amendments and you approved only two. And that is to cut the whole year estimate for buying drink, buying drinking water. And, and also cutting the whole year estimates for the operation of the sand land field of the E P D. And the, Elizabeth Quaid said that my amendment is really smearing Dongjiang water. It's not that what there have been serious pollution problems at this upstream part of Dongjiang River. That is indeed what is smearing the Dongjiang water. The D A B said that we should be thankful that we have the supply of Dongjiang water. But this is a, a deal, right? Well, unless we don't read newspaper articles, we don't pay attention to the facts. And we then would, would be noticed that there would be many incidents of water contamination in Dongjiang River.
The media paid a visit to Dongguan and the um plumbing that supplies water to Hong Kong. The water quality was very poor and they were close to landfills. And the mainland government has plans to build incinerators nearby. And poisonous substances might enter the knowledge which would condemn, contaminate the water source. In other words, Hong Kong people might be paying very expensive prices for contaminated water. And subsequently, the Hong Kong media again traced the origins of all the source of Dongjiang water. And again, they discovered this. again, they discovered this, they discovered contamination of pollutants. And the impoverished conditions meant that these issues could not be resolved. And again, the water quality at the source was called into question. And in early twenty thirteen, the media found that there was illegal discharge of wastewater into the source of Dongjiang water, including and there were deaths of frogs and fish. And in twenty fifteen, at multiple reservoirs, including the Plova Cove and Ma Liu Shui Reservoirs, water samples were taken and carcinogens were detected. And the levels were higher than the reservoirs that collect stormwater. And Dongjiang water was suspected as one of the sources. And in February twenty sixteen, we saw the height of avian flu. And reservoirs in Weizhou were revealed to have more than one thousand dead chickens disposed near the source. And in November last year, there were reports that at He Yuan, Guangdong, there was a village with deaths of cows due to diseases. More than ninety cows contracted the disease and about thirty died. And the suspected cause was water contamination. And the village involved was very close to Dongjiang. Chairman, the mainland government did not maintain the quality of Dongjiang water at a reasonable level. And the SAR government has no way to monitor the quality of water supply from Dongjiang. And Hong Kong people are spending substantially to buy drinking water with no quality assurance. And again, we have to spend substantially to filter the Dongjiang water that arrives in Hong Kong. And according to government figures, in twenty fifteen to sixteen, for reservoir water per cubic meter, the cost was four point three dollars. For flush water, five to six dollars per cubic meter. For Dongjiang water purchase and processing costs nine point five dollars per cubic meter. We are talking about nine point five dollars. People like Gary Chan, Elizabeth Kwad or Ann Chan have been touting the benefits of Dongjiang water. So this is not my view. Or else it would be very easy to become, to be a legal member if you just follow what the government says. Through this debate, we want to urge the government to speed up the supply of water by desolination of stormwater. We should enhance our own bargaining chips and we should cancel the bulk purchase system. And we should make prudent use of public money. This is the message I want to convey through my amendment. We should not resort to political attacks with no policy backing. Chairman, I would not support the appropriation bill. The SAR government has hefty surpluses and reserves. The former FS John Chang talked to intervene with the market. And you can see the current reserves are at a very high level. But there has been a lack of long-term financial planning to get around our deep-rooted problems. And the government is not returning the wealth to the people. In the face of public pressure, the FS Paul Chan reluctantly offered cash handouts to people who are not paying salary taxes, have no properties and are not receiving different sorts of social security allowance. The FS is offering cash handouts of four thousand dollars. And the number of beneficiaries will rise to two point eight million people for a total expenditure of eleven point two billion dollars. But is this a realization of the new fiscal policy touted by the FS and Carrie Lam? Are they sharing the fruits of success in the tune of more than one hundred forty billion dollars? If that is the case, the payout amounts should be higher. Now, people can only receive four thousand dollars. How about the high-income earners and businessmen? They can enjoy up to thirty thousand dollars of tax concession. And if you have a property, you can enjoy a ten thousand dollar rates waiver. So for the high earners and businessmen, they benefit much more than the ordinary citizen. And according to the budget supplement and for the number of beneficiaries for salaries, tax, fourteen, one point four million people, the average amount of benefit is more than twelve thousand dollars. And the biggest beneficiaries would be the eighty, eight hundred thousand dollars who make more than four hundred thousand dollars per month, per year. And for people with vacant flats, they can enjoy a total of fifteen point two million dollars in rates concessions if if they are yet to sell their properties. They, the total amount of savings amount to sixty-one million dollars. So you can see that the remedial measures are not universal. They do not serve to bridge the wealth gap between the high and low income earners. So the so-called sharing of economic success is just empty talk by the FS. The grassroots cannot benefit from the economic success. So the new fiscal philosophy is all empty talk. Of course, for Miss Carrie Lam and Mr. Paul Chan, they only decided to offer cash handouts after being subject to pressure. But and in twenty eleven to twelve, the then FS John Chang offered cash handouts as well, but the administrative costs were relatively low and reasonable. But for this budget, we have to pay very high administrative costs. And applications will only be open by next February. That's why the budget is so contentious. You have the money and the resources and you are offering cash handouts. But your approach has been, has not been welcomed. So after announcing his budget, the FS's reputation took a plummet. And this is clear for all to see. Chairman, I stress that the SAR government is well-placed to return the wealth to the people. And everyone above the age of eighteen should be given cash handouts of eight to ten thousand dollars. And the government should also work on the long-term policies to tackle our deep-rooted problems. For example, investing fifty billion dollars in the seed fund and another allocation for the housing reserve. And together with the seventy-seven billion dollars, the government should speed up and increase the housing production target or capacity. I would cast my vote against the appropriation bill during the third reading. Ms. Colliamo, do you wish to speak again?
To do a rebuttal to what our tourism representative has said earlier over this Ocean Park, thirty million assistance from the government. Now, as I was saying, the tourism sector delegate is speaking on behalf of his trade and industry. And we all knew that functional constituencies are made of basically vested interests. And they need to safeguard the vested interests. And so, well, most of them and most of the time. I'm not saying it's absolutely everyone and every time. Now tourism, of course, is important in Hong Kong. It makes up about five percent of our GDP. It's not particularly small, but it's not mega-large either. I mean, talking about the Ocean Park, which is my amendment, I think it's number fifty-three. That's right. You can't make it sound still tourism. One of the major icons being the Ocean Park is so very important to Hong Kong's livelihood. Without the Ocean Park or the tourism industry, will we all dead meat? If not by now, by next year. Now, this is all quite flawed arguments. I need to refute our tourism representatives' points one by one. Now, first one was, he was talking about this three hundred million, basically, spread over five years, over a five-year period, spending to sort of rescue the Ocean Park. Point one, he said, the Ocean Park is our collective memory. I quite agree, except the Ocean Park is not quite the park we manage to remember. It's revolved so much these days that quite a few sites of the park have become rather unrecognizable. And I'm sure our, my tourism colleague over there, he's not around anymore, of course. Hong Kong people have been terrified going to the Ocean Park, at least in the last decade. Why? Because that site has been so overwhelmed, so flooded, so inundated with mainland tourists. And if you remember what the government had to say about how exactly that three hundred million is going to be used. It would include sums, they didn't actually specify, but sums that would go and attract even more tourists, visitors to the park from our favorite client labels. So you know, I know, you know what we're talking about, mainland Chinese tourists again. So this is all logically wrong. We're terrified of something. You spend more money to do something that would make that something even more terrifying. Excuse me. And in any case, if you look at the figures, Hong Kong tourist arrivals per year these days, well, it's been like similar in the last five, six years. It's about sixty million, six zero million a year. And that's more than the total for the whole of the United Kingdom. I'm not talking about London alone. And it's more than the whole of Japan. And I'm not talking about Tokyo alone. Has Hong Kong gone nuts? Do we really need all those travelers milling around town, setting up cam on our beaches? Come on, they are making Hong Kong even more Third World looking. And our tourism delegates' argument number two was, oh, we need to help the Ocean Park to try to help take it out of the red because it's losing money. Without saying that this is a statutory body and it's supposed to be financially independent. I mean, that's going to be a very dangerous precedent if that's the case. From now on, if the Housing Authority is in the red, oh, poor me, please, could you help me, dear government? Or what about the Urban Renewal Authority? Although it's been making money, I know. It's a very dangerous precedent. And of course, the argument was saying that there's been so much keen, cutthroat even competition in the region. So the Ocean Park needs to shape up. Shape up how? What's being talked about is this, what's called Ocean Kingdom in Zhuhai. Now, if you think more mainland tourists would prefer to go to Zhuhai to look at the performances of white dolphins and white whales, let them. Because we don't want any more animal shows in Hong Kong in any case. Point number three that I need to argue against was that, oh, the Ocean Park is going to put up this new light and shadow, whatnot show. And it's full of local colors. Well, we'll see, we haven't seen it, right? But once again, you know, I know, you know, what light and show for the extravaganza? What about it? How attractive really could it be? Just for the sake of it, people would go and see and get buy a ticket to get into Ocean Park? I doubt it very much. This is not Luxor, this is Hong Kong. We don't have the pyramids here. No light and shadow show could be as, you know, attractive. And is it worth it? But never mind. Point number four, the argument goes, we're only talking about three hundred million. It's a tiny sum. Of course, it's a tiny sum compared to our really overflowing government coffers. But if you say, because it's the money, the sum is so small, we can just ignore it, excuse me. We are also fighting for the cutting of this spending of mere one million dollars for what? For supposedly mercifully murder our animals. We're only talking about one million Hong Kong dollars. It's barely one cent as far as the government's concerned. What a tiny sum, completely negligible, right? So it's not the amount that matters. The cross of the problem is that aquariums of the kind and animal entertainment parks shouldn't really exist anymore. Well, earlier I was saying that we should also cut that spending of fifty million Hong Kong dollars to GIS, which is the government's publicist, spin doctor, what have you, right? We're all talking about small sums, but we need to look at the logic and the health of our, the little and the health of our, the literal moral health of our government budget, the bill. Already, we're talking about the shutting down of actual aquariums and entertainment parks with animal shows around the world. There is this Empty the Tanks international movement. It's picking up steam. It's a very fast-growing international movement. Empty the Tanks. We're going to the Ocean Park again coming Saturday to urge that, well, this advocacy of ours that let all animals be wild and free. Now, this is not a particularly radical movement that would demand all caged marine mammals should be released back to the sea. We understand that quite a few of them were actually born in captivity. And they're not fit to just be back in the ocean and be asked to survive on. They wouldn't be able to cope. We understand that. But the idea is we should put a stop to this. We have to start putting a stop to this. And those which, or who, rather, cannot make it back to the ocean right now. We should at least let them live in some sort of sea pen. Pen spelled P E N, meaning they could at least live in some sort of surrounded seawater. That's the idea. And we do not try to sell the Ocean Park again as some animal fun place. Now, we're not saying that the Ocean Park should go, not at all. It should stay on and it will stay on with its rather fun, I would say, mechanical rides. The roller coaster in particular has been very popular and I had tried it myself. It was rather fun, but let that stay on. For the animal shows, we can always use whatever they call it, light and shadow, four D performances, presentations. They're very real. Already in Shanghai, Disney, they're using those four D films to really impress the young. So my tourism colleagues' arguments earlier today that the Ocean Park should be left alone with the three hundred million dollars government handout, the government dough. It's not just logically wrong. It's also, I hate to use the word, but it's true, morally also wrong. The Empty the Tanks campaign had this saying, marine entertainment parks have no place in our world anymore. We're living in twenty eighteen, twenty eighteen, New Age. If not for the humankind, please for the animal kind. Why? Because many of the, all these marine animals, they're incredibly social, intelligent beings that are being exploited to make money. This is animal slavery. Full stop. This is included in the manifesto of Empty the Tanks. It's on the website. Now, only yesterday, the Ocean Park had some protest, apparently. Somebody hung up a huge banner next to its seahorse icon. And the seahorse's eye got a big cross on it instead. People are waking up that when we were young, we seriously appreciated the killer whale, you remember? And all those white dolphins, not white, but dolphin shows. And the, all the seals performing, oh, they're so cute, so sweet. But things have changed. We were quoting Gandhi just now. He was not talking about a city. He was talking about a people. The greatness of a nation and its moral progress can be judged by how its animals are treated. Thank you.
The meeting is now adjourned until nine AM tomorrow.